Okay, Madam President, I think we have, well, Madam Vice President tonight, or Madam President isn't able to join us tonight. So with that, Ms. McCann, I believe we have everyone here.
Thank you. Yeah, I was hoping I would never have to run a Zoom meeting, but we're still doing it, so have to do one. The Board already met in executive session and we did the salute to the flag already. So at this point, we're going to start our regular session and have a roll call, please, Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Ms. Beckman?
Here.
Mrs. White?
Yeah.
Ms. Hira?
Here.
Mr. Markarian?
Here.
Mr. Syatt?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Mrs. McKean?
Here.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you. We're up to the statement of public notice, so I get to read the big long one that we have during COVID times. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education of Berners Township. Notice of the time and place of this meeting was provided and copies of that resolution were forwarded to the official newspapers as designated by the Board of Education and to the township clerk, and a copy of the notice was posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education offices in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Due to the public health emergency in the state of New Jersey, as declared in Executive Order 103, the Board will be suspending its normal meeting procedures this evening and conducting a virtual meeting. Directions for accessing the virtual public meeting were posted on the district website, www.bernersboe.com. These same directions were posted at our intended but unavailable meeting location. We very much welcome input from the public. Because this is a virtual meeting, public comment will be handled in three ways, and these instructions are on the website. So public comment method one is to zoom in via video. So when you're ready to join, use the Zoom link posted on our website, www.bernersboe.com. Make sure if you zoom in that you remember to mute your live stream of the YouTube, otherwise you'll be on delay and you won't be able to hear what we're saying to you. So if you come in that way through Zoom, you'll be placed in a queue, in a waiting room in the Zoom, and admitted to the meeting when it's your turn to make a public comment. Once you have been admitted to the Zoom and it's time to make your comments, state your full name and address, and then make your comments. Then the second method is to dial in via Zoom voice only, so the instructions for that are also on the website. And you will just call in and do an audio call on Zoom. And the same thing, you'll be brought in out of the waiting room and do your public comment. Also make sure that you mute your live stream of the meeting so that you don't have the feedback when you're trying to speak. Public comment method three is that, starting at 7:00 PM, you can email your comment to btconnect@bernersboe.com or text your comment to 908-292-3047. Use public comment as the email subject or start of your text message. And please indicate your first and last name and address. This is required in order for your public comment to be included. Regardless of whether you use method one, two, or three for public comment, please note that public comments are limited to a maximum of approximately three minutes if read aloud. Individuals are permitted a maximum of one public comment during public comment on agenda items and a maximum of one public comment during the public comment on non-agenda items, so one time during each public comment session. Public comments submitted via method one and two through the Zoom will be processed first, then comments submitted by method three will be read. The Board of Education reserves the right to limit the length of time allotted for public comment for both agenda items and non-agenda items. We've been doing 45 minutes for each public comment session, so that's what we'll do again tonight. No public comments will be accepted before 7:00 PM or after item 19 Board Forum begins. Please understand that public comment portions of our agendas are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather they are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the Board. The Board may or may not respond to public comments, but any Board responses to public comments will generally be addressed during Board Forum or during committee reports. However, all comments are considered and will be investigated and addressed as appropriate. Please be courteous and mindful of the rights of others when providing comments. Comments may not be abusive, obscene, threatening, or irrelevant. Please understand that students and employees have specific legal and privacy protections. The Board is not permitted to respond in public to comments about students and employees. Please understand that the Board will not be responsible for the content of comments made by members of the public. Members of the public are cautioned that they are commenting at their own risk, and any personally directed statements that they make may subject them to legal liability to the affected individual. If it is necessary for the Board to go into executive session at the end of the meeting, we will provide an estimated length of time for the session and whether any action is anticipated to be taken upon return to the public session. Okay, got that done. So now we're up to our student representative, Juliette Knoll.
Hi, thank you. Hello. So today, students felt a dramatic change in the year as the district is back to a full five-day schedule for the first time in a long while. Attending school from 7:30 to 2:30 today felt strangely foreign, even though I technically did it for almost three years. Throughout this process, there have been some difficulties for both students and teachers in adjusting to the full day extension, but it certainly is a bit closer to normalcy. At Ridge, the Drama Club has been working tirelessly on the spring musical Cats, which is opening this weekend. We are all incredibly excited and proud of their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Juliette. I saw a picture, I think it was, was it on the patch or Burnsville News, of the cast in their costumes out in the grass at Pleasant Valley. It looked really cool. I'm sure it's gonna be a wonderful production. Does anyone have any questions for Juliette? Okay, thank you so much for your report, and as usual, you're welcome to stay or do whatever else you need to do.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So now we're up to the public hearing on the 2021-22 budget. So we're gonna start off with the presentation, and then after that, we'll have Board Forum on the budget and public comment on the budget. So I'll turn that over for this.
Thank you, Ms. McCann. I just wanted to thank everyone for being here tonight. And the footnote here, I know that Ms. Fox is having a bit of technical difficulty, so you may or may not see her tonight. She might be coming and going a little bit. But thank you to Mr. McLaughlin. I know that he's worked very hard, as usual, in preparing tonight's presentation for our budget for the 2021-22 school year. So I'll certainly be delighted to have him present for you tonight. And also, you'll hear myself and perhaps Mr. Syatt or Ms. Fox weigh in on some slides towards the end of the presentation. So with that, I'm gonna turn things over to our school business administrator, Mr. McLaughlin.
I think we just worked on that.
About that, I needed to unmute before I obliterated my screen with the shared presentation. Try that again. Good evening. Hopefully, everyone can see the presentation at this point. If I could get a thumbs up from a member of the Board or from Nick, just now that everyone can see it, okay, thank you. This is the annual public hearing on the proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year 21-22 for the Berners Township School District. And without further ado, we'll immerse ourselves into that. This is a quick snapshot comparing the proposed budget to the current year's operating budget. And we'll get into some detail on a number of facets of this slide in a minute or two. But general operating expenses are proposed to go up $3.6 million. Capital expenses roughly a $227,000 reduction. And overall, the general operating costs have a net increase of $3.4 million. We have a minor $356 anticipated expenditure or increase in expenditures for recurring federal grants, although we have a lot of one-time grants, as you'll see in a minute or two. Debt expenses are down roughly $2,900 year-over-year, and the total budget goes up $3.4 million. So what's driving that in terms of general operations, grant, and debt expense changes? Salaries are the major driver of contractual increases, extended school year, substitute costs, just over $1 million. Employee health benefits, which we'll talk about a bit more as we get further on into the presentation, are up $1.7 million. A significant contributing factor here is the change in the employee health benefit statutes in the state of New Jersey, which are referred to by most people in the businesses, Chapter 44, since that's the chapter law from calendar year 2020 in which changes were promulgated, and I'll talk about that in some detail going forward because that accounts for more than half of this cost. Support services for nursing and extraordinary and related services, which are all services in this case, as I'm referring to them here, for classified students are up just under $60,000. Professional services and telecom services up about $32,000. The lion's share of this really is for legal services. And then pension and unemployment up roughly $159,000. Again, here, the large driver really is unemployment and because of the various extended unemployment terms of the various federal acts that have been passed and then extended again over the last 15 months, we needed to make provision for those additional extended periods of unemployment that folks that would normally become unemployed after working in Berners Township now have extended periods of time in which they are able to collect benefits. And we need to make a budgetary provision for that for the first time in probably the nine years that I've been here. Current capital outlay is down $225,000. The major drop-off here really is the capital, long-term capital leases coming to termination, full payment this year, ending June 30th. The largest outlay that we still had outstanding really was for a $1.2 million capital lease purchase that we did for technology five years ago. With the termination of that, the current capital outlay, from which the principal and interest on those lease purchase agreements are predicated, comes to an end. Facilities ground and maintenance unionization drove up the cost $349,000. In the past six months, the local custodial grounds and maintenance workers in Berners Township were unionized for the first time. And as a result, the overarching master union agreement is gonna drive up the cost of labor for those services. Special education placements always vary from year to year, depending upon the mix and the need for the type of placement that students out of district have. And these are cost-related out-of-district placements at roughly $297,000. As I said upfront, the payment on the long-term serial bond debt that we have from a previous year's referenda is relatively static. It's actually about $2,900 less this year than it was last year in grants. And here, I'm only talking about the recurring grants that we have, which are for the Every Student Shall Succeed Act, which are titles one, two, three, and four, as well as for the IDEA Basic and Preschool Program are up $356 year-over-year. We will talk about some one-time grants that we have, which are primarily related to COVID-related and pandemic-related funding sources from the federal government as we get further on, but they're not part of the base budget here. We always talk about budgeted fund balance, and I'm gonna talk about this in a little bit more detail as we get further into the presentation, because at $4.7 million, we are actually significantly higher than we generally are in terms of budgeted fund balance, which is something that we put aside as a legal reserve to help offset the operating expenses of the budget year-over-year. We made an additional effort to save money from March through June of last year, which is why we have this increased amount of money, knowing full well that we might have additional unique one-time expenses this year, which we certainly have had. Here's a comparative analysis of revenue from the current year's budget in yellow to the proposed budget in the upcoming year. A fund balance does have a footnote here that I'd like to bring to your attention, and they're all that ties into the state aid number, which is in yellow on the extension below, and references the fact that while we originally had a budget that we approved in May of last year, it was $430,000 more, it had almost $431,000 more, I should say, in state aid at that time. So that $4.8 million was higher by $431,000, almost $431,000. However, when the legislature came along and finally revised its appropriations bill for the year, which it did in July, because it gave itself an extension due to the pandemic, it reduced that number by $431,000. And rather than reduce our level of anticipated programs and services, we appropriated an additional fund balance amount in that. So the $3.4 million you see above was originally $431,000 less. So really, year-over-year, when you compare the net numbers, it's $1.3 million, but it would have been as much as $1.7 million had we not had to increase that fund balance. In terms of other changes, maintenance reserve is relatively flat. We don't need that at this point in the year, so we're not making reserve withdrawal from maintenance reserve to balance the budget. We anticipate tuition and miscellaneous revenue to still be about $414,000 less. The driver here primarily are the miscellaneous revenues we've received in prior years for the rental of our facilities. And in structuring this budget, which we began back in January, and not knowing what kind of a year we would have or what kinds of restrictions we would have for the types of 24/7 rentals that we have done in past years, we anticipated not receiving those in the ensuing year. It's entirely possible that as things open up, we may actually realize that and have a revenue windfall. But it's uncertain at this time, and it would not make sense for us to have based a budget on something that was so tenuous as the miscellaneous revenue that comes about from the rental of facilities and that require large groups of people to be able to use your facilities at any given point in time. The tax levy is a 2% increase year-over-year, and state aid is up $762,472. I will talk about that a little bit more in an ensuing slide, because there are some longer-term concerns about it. While we're happy to have it this year, we are concerned about the sustainability of those levels of state funding. Extraordinary aid is budgeted flat year-over-year. SEMI, which is a state education Medicaid initiative, which we are forced to participate in by the state, generates $5,000 for us. The state makes every district participate in it, because really, for every 30 cents we collect, they collect about 70 cents. So it's really something that the state wants every district to do, just because of what it brings in at the state level for the state. Federal grants, I've talked about that already, and the debt levy I've talked about already as well. Overall, state debt aid is relatively flat. It's down $710, and there you see the tie-out to the expense increase that I showed you on slide number one of $3.4 million. So what are the major factors? I've already touched upon a number of them, but it should be stated for the record that current programs and services are sustained. Staffing levels in general remain unchanged from the current year's adopted budget levels. That's what we have budgeted here, okay? District enrollment continues to decline. I'm gonna talk about that a little bit, and then I'm sure Mr. Markarian will talk about it a little bit more in some of the slides that he has. As I indicated right up front, you know, we have a major increase in health benefit costs this year, and the large driver in that is the state-mandated Chapter 44 Health Benefits Programs. They negatively impacted districts such as Berners, which have done a huge amount of work in structuring their benefits to be sustainable and in terms of not only providing a good quality of benefit to their collectively bargained groups of employees, but also at a cost that is effective and efficient for the Board to be able to maintain within all the constraints that are imposed upon us by the state in terms of levies and state aid and so forth. Unionization of facility services, as I indicated before, has impacted us negatively. And of course, I'm gonna talk a little bit about, as I said before, the state categorical aid and other state aids, and how sustainable are they? Major district capital projects continue to proceed. We'll talk about the William Annan Science Lab renovation in a few minutes. And significant costs related to one-time and recurrent pandemic-related needs have been largely offset by one-time federal grants. And we'll talk about those, because they are significant. So in terms of sustaining programs and services, the budget supports the district's ongoing efforts to complete district goals that are connected to the strategic plan. Some of the more significant activities in the strategic plan are professional development of the staff, student competence, safety and security, and communication and collaboration. And these are supported by development of the staff, technological hardware, and software resources and infrastructure. There are some expanded opportunities within this budget. It supports expanded opportunities through enrichment, gifted and talented programming, also known as the Quest Program. There are required trainings in advanced placement courses, additional training for our new district reading assessment initiative, the fact that we are transitioning Ridge High School next year to a modified rotating drop schedule, the staffing of an additional coordinator of a district mentoring program, the Big Sibling Program, provision of summer intervention program for struggling and or disengaged students, and I know there's further discussion of that towards the end of this presentation by Mr. Markarian, and our continued efforts to focus on character-related initiatives, such as Character Strong at Ridge High School. As I indicated before, we continue to see a significant decline in enrollment. If you look back to October of 16, and why I have October here is that is the month, mid-month of every year from 2016 through 2020 you're seeing here, in which the state requires us to do a head count. And that head count is the basis for how they provide us state aid. The heads are, and there's a whole involved process of basically looking at certain specific categories of students and providing weights to those, whether they're elementary, middle school, or high school, whether they're classified or not, whether they are limited English proficient and so forth. The list goes on and on, and there's a weight attributed to each of those in a dollar amount. But the bottom line here, and I think the takeaway that you wanna have here is, is important to note, is that since 2016, we have a reduction in staff, excuse me, if not in staff, I'm sorry, of students of 673. That's a significant reduction, obviously. Here's another quick look at some of the data that relates to that. So as you can see in the data for 1617 through 202021, we have actual data that corresponds to the counts that you see here from the ASSA. And what I've inserted here is what our demographer, Dr. Grip, has projected our enrollment to be for next year. And you can see that it is, in fact, higher than where we're at this year, but we believe that this year is a bit of an outlier due to the pandemic causing some disenrollment that would be potentially temporary for at least the foreseeable years. So we anticipate it's gonna come back to 4934. The other thing worth noting here is that, over the same period of time, while we've had this significant decline in enrollment, what we actually have spent per pupil in the classroom in terms of salaries and benefits, in terms of textbooks and supplies, and in terms of everything overall, you're gonna see an increase of 22.78% per pupil. So while we have had a significant and steady decline, what we've put into the classroom in terms of resources has continued to go up. Okay, I won't dwell on this a lot, because for those of you who were at the March 22 presentation, you already saw this piece. But in July of this past calendar year, the state legislature enacted and the governor signed a new bill that promulgated the creation of the New Jersey Educators' Health Plan and the Garden State Health Plan. The first had to be implemented by January 1 of this calendar year, and the second is scheduled to be implemented by August 1. However, at this point in time, we have still not received the state's parameters for that Garden State Health Plan, and so underwriters can't actually structure that plan yet. The law requires districts with private insurance or self-insurance to implement equivalent plans, and we are a self-funded school district in terms of insurance, meaning that we actually act as the insurance company, even though we use a network such as Horizon to administer the claims and to, we avail ourselves, obviously, of the bargain provisions they have with their providers in terms of rate structure as well. But we are actually the bank, so to speak. Effective January 1 of 2021, some 316 of our district staff elected this new plan. The plan eliminates employee contribution requirements of Chapter 70B and significantly increased the district's share of the cost, which is why, when I showed the slide right up front that said that our increases were gonna go up by $1.7 million for health benefits this year, I mentioned this fact, because $700,000 to $800,000 of that 1.7 is directly attributable to the loss of contributions that we have. to the loss of contributions that we have. And as I noted a minute ago, we don't know what the impact of the Garden State Health Plan is going to be because our underwriters can't estimate its impact until the state tells us what the parameters of that program are going to be. So stay tuned and we'll see what happens. Unionization, as I indicated, has resulted in the third-party provider escalation of wages above the state of New Jersey's already progressive minimum wage rate. We've been advised that the master agreement with the union provides for significant increases in health benefit plans for each employee without regard to tiering, which means that rather than structuring a tiering of health benefits, which is one of the more traditional ways, they use what is called more of a universal premium, which means that they have the one fixed premium amount for all employees. Sometimes that's great and sometimes it's not. Why it's generally not good is that, you know, it's providing a higher level of premium cost, assuming a family level of coverage for every employee, regardless of whether they only have two individuals to insure or they have a family of four or five to ensure. So, you know, it depends on the mix of employees you have, but for us, it's not necessarily a positive development. State aid. The state aid that's proposed is seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars more. And I always say proposed because the legislature has until June thirtieth of every year to enact this. You know, last year they had until July because it was an unusual year and they got an extension because of the pandemic. But constitutionally, generally, they're supposed to do it by June thirtieth. And in, and I would say that invariably, aside from last year and the, where there was a reduction from what they gave us in their budget notice when the governor releases his budget message, usually these numbers are solid numbers, meaning that they don't change. The question really is, is this sustainable? State budget calls overall, I think it's a forty-four billion dollar budget, and calls for more than a ten percent increase in year-over-year spending. So it's roughly four billion dollars more than it was in the prior year, the proposed budget. And more than ten percent of the state's proposed spending is covered by non-recurring or one-shot revenues. It's simply as I can explain it, the state borrowed roughly nine billion dollars last year. They needed some of that to cover the shortfalls they had for the year that ended June thirtieth. It turned out they didn't need quite as much as what they thought they needed, and they put the balance of that into the state's fund balance, which now this year they are appropriating. And that's where the one-time revenues are essentially coming from, from the borrowing that they did during the pandemic. I did mention that we had a significant amount of one-time pandemic-related costs. And as you can see here, I won't go through each item, but we, I broke them down into general categories of expenditure. Sanitizing, equipment, screening thermometers, and then refills for hands-free bathrooms like paper towels, sanitizing wipes, sanitizer refills, soap refills, technology, largely driven by the purchase of more than a thousand new Chromebooks, personal protective equipment, including masks and gloves. And then, as I noted, upgraded hands-free restrooms and nurses' offices. Over a million sixteen in outlays. What you see below are the various streams of revenue from the federal government that are one-time enactments of funds that relate directly to the pandemic, which we are able to tap in order to offset these costs. The one that I really want to bring your attention to is the one that's in yellow because we're going to talk about that a little bit in the next slide. That really relates to a second tranche of ESER funds, which we have not fully expended. The four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars you see here as an offset is not the entirety of that pot of monies. For the others that you see here, the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act CARES, and then the CARES Act passed through, the Coronavirus Relief Fund, FEMA, and even the Title One Funds, those are fully expended amounts of those grants and those are fully the amounts of those grants. However, the ESER two funds, which you'll see in a minute, that's only a portion of what we receive on those. And those were funds that were just appropriated by the federal government in December of twenty twenty. There is a, an additional tranche of funds coming, ESER three, but we do not have an allocation yet. And we're still waiting on the state to tell us what that pot of money will look like. And that pot of money is directly attributable to the appropriations under the American Recovery Plan, which was enacted by the Congress and Senate in, I believe, March of twenty twenty-one. So a little bit different look at, at, at federal funds. These are one-time funds, so they're not part of our basic budget, but they've been used for a lot of these pandemic-related costs. And you can see they were significant. We have already talked about the CARES Act, ESER one. If you go back to the previous screen, you'll see that here. And you'll be able to crosswalk every one of these. And by the way, this presentation will be up on the district's website tomorrow. So if you want to refer to it, it will be there. The ESER two funds, as I indicated, we have not fully expended those yet. There are a million five sixty-five of which we've only expended four hundred and forty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. It is our intention to spend the balance of that million to upgrade our HVAC systems, potentially with additional air purification systems that will, in the long run, improve the overall quality of air that we have in our buildings. But in the short run, will also provide us with an additional level of protection against various types of airborne respiratory viruses. They're not a silver bullet, but they significantly reduce the amount of particulate that's in the air. They're a proven long, they've been around for years. The thing that we're talking about implementing or the process, the devices we're talking about putting in place are needlepoint bipolar ionization units, which are relatively easily retrofitted into our devices. But that'll probably balance out potentially the rest of that ESER two pot of money. The Learning Acceleration Grant, which would be used for summer intervention programs, is also part of that pot. And then there is an additional forty-five thousand dollar mental health grant, which would be used for professional development, professional development and diversity equity services. So I won't dwell on this. Like I said, this will be out on the website for anybody that wants to look at it. The important piece here really is down at the bottom, we're talking about a two percent increase in the general tax levy. And we're talking about a twenty-two hundred and thirty-nine dollar reduction in the levy for debt service. Overall, it's just over one point eight percent net increase in the tax levy. As I indicated upfront, we are continuing with this, this, this year with our ongoing capital projects. They're not really dependent upon the budget, which is something that we tried to do to get away from having to balance the budget with capital projects years ago, because that becomes a very difficult dance to do, so to speak, when you only have a two percent increase in your tax levy year over year and then you're forced to choose between what do you want to do in the classroom and sustain versus the needs that you have for capital enhancements to your buildings. And so we came up with a long-term capital funding strategy, which allows us, without raising additional taxes, to fund it through capital reserves, which we have done through, you know, various operational efficiencies over the years. William Ann and Science Rooms have been a longstanding project, and what's being done is as follows. There are four classrooms that are in the four hundred wing, four hundred A, B, C, and D that are going to be renovated to include sinks that presently don't exist. They'll get all-new casework, including base units, countertops and wall cabinets. Two class, three classrooms, three oh nine, three eleven and three thirteen are really going to be consolidated into two, which means that you're going to have enlarged class science rooms, science classrooms. They're going to receive new floor finishes, wall finishes and ceilings, new casework in these areas throughout with sinks, new base cabinets, countertops and wall cabinets. This is generally the layout for the sixth grade science, with the added sinks and storage. You can see the casework up above, the sinks below represented by these little inverted kind of Ts and bottom casework. These are going to be along the wall. And then this is what the layout will look like in the eighth grade science classes that are being the enlarged class spaces. Mr. Mark Carrion?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Mr. McLaughlin. So, you know, as we appreciate all the financial work that Mr. McLaughlin puts in behind the scenes to make sure that we have excellent long-range planning and the ability to sustain our programs as well as sustain the viability of our facilities. A lot goes into that process. I really appreciate the work that Mr. McLaughlin does to keep us in good stead. And I just want to thank him for his work. As we get into a few slides to kind of wrap things up a little bit from the program side, you know, one of the things that we always think about from, from year to year to year is managing our staff and trying to put them into play in ways that we think are going to be most beneficial for the students. And that obviously involves a lot of what it is that the students enroll in when they have the opportunity to schedule their courses, what kinds of selections do they make? And obviously, the enrollment that we have in our buildings as well. And as, as Mr. McLaughlin alluded to, we are in a trend of declining enrollment. And the other aspect, of course, that drives a lot of our staffing considerations are specific needs that we identify by data that we're collecting on the students in terms of academic information, as well as the student's individual education plans. So with that being said, next slide, please, Mr. McLaughlin. I just wanted to share with you something that Mr. McLaughlin mentioned earlier, which was our demographer's report and what he had forecast for our enrollment going forward a little bit further. And it's probably going to be important work for us to take another look at this in the, in the fall of this coming school year, to try to update these projections as the community evolves over time. But I just wanted to say that the estimates that were in play for the current school year, we do believe were impacted by the pandemic. When we take a look at the total number of students that were forecast to be here in the current school year at the five thousand two that you see on this slide, we see that the vast majority of the students that did not appear in that number, which is a margin of about a hundred and twenty students, fewer than what was projected, because this year, right now, as of May, we're at four thousand eight hundred eighty-one students. So we're about a hundred and twenty or so students fewer than was forecast. And when you take a look at that on an individual grade level or school basis, what you see is that most of that, a hundred and fifteen students actually were from the K-five grade range. So elementary school students that did not account for what was projected by Dr. Grip when he did this, when he did these figures. And we are seeing that across the grades, K-five in all the schools, seeing that declining enrollment. We actually, we're off by about six students at William Ann and Middle School. So that twelve oh two, currently we are at eleven ninety-six at William Ann. And at Ridge High School, we are at one thousand eight oh nine. So actually a little bit higher than the projected number there at Ridge High School. So basically, we're about a hundred or so students fewer than what we anticipated through Dr. Grip's projections. I think it's going to be an interesting issue to follow going forward. Obviously, something that impacts us and our operations on an annual basis is our enrollment. And we have to watch and see what goes on with the kindergarten students. In particular, I wanted to note, as you can see in the notes there, that the kindergarten enrollment is an issue we have been seeking actively, reminding folks in any way possible with my SOS expresses and with the notes that the elementary principals are putting out there each week. If you or anyone that you know has a kindergarten-age student, we would direct you and anyone that you may know looking to enroll their kindergarten student to the district website. Right there, front and center on our homepage, you will see the links for registering new students for September. So certainly, our plan is to have a regular full-day school operating in as normal a fashion as possible for September. Looking forward to that as we began today, actually, with today's day of school being a full day for our students. So we really look forward to that, and we hope that everyone that has a kindergarten student will jump on board and, and navigate to the registration information posted on our district webpage. Next slide, please. So as far as changes in staff are concerned, we definitely had some contraction. Again, as you can see in, in my notes there, Mr. Syt was kind enough to pull together all of the information that we have to date on our full-time equivalent. That is the FTE, the full-time equivalent contraction that we see going on in our staffing ranks. And you'll notice that large number seventeen in the K-five range, that includes nine of our extra teachers for just this year. You may recall that earlier in the school year, we did bring on some additional elementary school teachers to manage class size and try to give the elementary students as much literacy support as possible. So we will not be renewing all of those teachers. And due to the declining enrollment, we anticipate another eight elementary teachers that will not be coming back as a function really just of enrollment changes. We also are seeing a little bit of that happen in our, in our six-twelve ranks. A science teacher, a business teacher, one point six FTEs in Spanish, point four FTEs in ESL, as well as one administrative assistant. The other side of the coin, of course, is, well, where, where are you expanding? We are not looking to increase in any way in instructional staff, in teachers. We will repurpose some staff in different roles, but we will not be looking to increase in full-time equivalents for any of our teaching staff. However, we will talk in a little bit about the fact that we do anticipate some additional aides being hired for next school year that will really be working as cafeteria-type aides at the high school is what we're proposing. Next slide, thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. So how are we repurposing our staff resources? And where, where are we redirecting funds in order to meet the needs of our students? So we anticipate our existing workforce will be working a bit extra this summer in order to provide some support for our students, partially in response to the challenges that we had during this school year with the pandemic. So one of the areas where we're investing some more resources is in the extended school year program. And notably, the extended school year program, or ESY, as it is often referred to, is specific for our special education students to meet their individualized education programs. So the plan there is to simply lengthen the school day during extended school year. Depending on the exact program that the students are in, they will be experiencing a longer day. So we're going to direct some extra resources towards that program. The second part, and something that Mr. McLaughlin alluded to a little bit in terms of some of the grants, is summer literacy programs for identified students at the K-five level. So we're looking at a couple of different types of programs. One program is going to be specific for English Language Arts for our K-two students. And we anticipate small groups of forty-five-minute sessions running for nineteen days between July sixth and August fifth. A slightly different program would be for the students in grades three to five. And these students would have one or two subject areas depending on their identified need. Each subject area- Each subject area will be for two hours long. And the meeting dates will be between Ju-, June 21st and July 23rd. Now, in that context, a student may have two hours of English, English Language Arts and two hours of math, or they might have just two hours of English Language Arts and just two hours of math. It depends on their needs. Um, we are going to be reaching out to families of identified students by email so that each family will know exactly what's going on, uh, if they are identified. We'll also be communicating a interest survey so that once we've identified, um, the students for the programs that, uh, we can collect feedback from the parents so that we understand how many students we should expect to have and we can appropriately, uh, staff the program. We anticipate that communication to be coming out by the end of this week. Next slide. Thank you. Continuing with staffing realignments, we are also, uh, redirecting some of our elementary staff, um, into new roles. And the purpose of that will be to add greater emphasis in some math instruction. So we're taking a look at our enrichment program, media and technology, as well as mathematics to try to create a better dynamic to provide more focused math instruction. So this would allow us to have a little bit more, uh, flexibility to address some of our, uh, quest programs as well as some of our programs where we want to be able to support students specifically with math instruction. Two other items I know I heard, uh, Mr. McLaughlin mentioned as well, uh, these two programs we're really excited by. One is called the Big Sibling Program, uh, which, which is really just summarized there as connecting high school-age students to elementary and lower middle school age students. And our Ridge Character and Wellness Program, which is also designed to provide greater connectedness through our students by developing programs and lessons for both staff and students to address school culture and climate. Okay, I think we missed the last slide, Mr. McLaughlin. Just go back to that one at the end. Thank you. So this last item before we close is, um, a little bit of realignment of resources for Ridge High School. Um, as everyone knows, that's been following along with our rotating drop schedule for Ridge High School for next year. One of the things we want to direct some staff resources to is, uh, really curriculum writing over the summer. So we want to be able to provide all teachers that teach courses at Ridge with one day of summer curriculum writing for each of the courses that they teach. This will allow teachers to spend some time together who work on the same, who work to teach the same course, uh, so that they can be together and work on scope and sequence and planning, uh, assessments in ways that will, uh, be more accommodating for the rotating drop schedule. We also want to hire, uh, a single health and PE teacher for Ridge High School. We know that the current program of option two, uh, was two marking periods of option two for students in sport. We're going to be moving to one. That's going to put more students into physical education classes. So to make sure that we have a manageable class size there, we are proposing to bring, uh, a additional health and physical education teacher to Ridge High School. And finally, in order to make sure we have enough school aides to cover duty assignments, uh, at Ridge High School to be compliant with the contract between the Board of Education and, uh, the Teachers Association, we have to be cognizant of the amount of time that teachers are asked to run duties. Uh, and we want to make sure that we can relieve them of those duty assignments to be consistent with the contact, contract requirements, but also to be able to provide them, uh, a little bit of time during the, uh, unit lunch period to engage in professional activities. So, um, by redirecting some of the, uh, reductions that we discussed a few slides earlier, we're able to, uh, accommodate some of the direction that the schools are going in, uh, in other areas. So shifting resources a bit to align with, um, the evolving needs of the district. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. I think you can stop sharing at this point, Mr. McLaughlin, uh, and at this point in time, I would ask, uh, our Vice President of the Board of Our, of our Board of Education, Mrs. McCann, uh, if she wants to entertain any, uh, questions from our Board of Education. Uh, and then also to remember that, uh, because of the specific nature of the public hearing on the budget, we also want to make sure that, um, we include a specific, uh, public comment on the budget after, um, the Board of Education has an opportunity to address any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarrion, and thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, for your very thorough presentation. Um, at this point, we'll open it up if board members have any questions or comments about the presentation. Suzanne?
I have one comment. I think it's more for point of clarification for the public, but with the intent, uh, well, with the, um, reduction in the, um, FTEs in the elementary schools, that's not being done purposely to raise class sizes, right? It's doing, being done because we're reflecting the drop in the numbers, overall numbers in the classes.
Right, that's correct. So it's, it's not about, um, raising class size. You know, if you keep in mind that right now, we, we're a bit of a divided force, right? And our class sizes were intentionally lowered beyond normal ranges in order to accommodate the needs that we had in the pandemic. So if you recall, we were trying initially to lower class sizes to roughly half of what they typically would be. And on top of that, we had some of our teachers, um, working from home, working specifically with students who are, uh, currently or were at the time, a 100% virtual. So really, um, the extra staff were designed to make that possible. Um, so some of the staff are not going to be needed, um, planning for normalcy and normal class sizes next year. And when you combine that with the overall impact of enrollment shift, um, that is really the, the reason for the reduction. Now, um, as we do every year, we, we have to be fair to our staff, uh, from the perspective that, um, if we feel that there is a, a possibility that we may not have enough students, we give them a heads up and, and we let them know, um, that we do have to reduce because we anticipate that we may not have, um, enough students to form, um, as many classes as we might possibly have, uh, currently. However, it is not uncommon that as things evolve, uh, between now and the middle of the summer, we see enrollment shift and enrollment change. So it's not uncommon that, um, sometime, you know, towards the end of the school year, June or July, uh, after more folks have registered their students, we see an uptick in one building or another. We may have to recall someone who we initially, uh, had to let go, but now we have enough students back that we can, uh, ask them to return. But it is not about, you know, raising class size. It's about not needing to have class size being half of normal.
Does anybody else have any questions? I just wanted to, um, thank you for, like, laying out the specific items that the funding, you know, due to the, um, COVID virus, uh, like all the different funding categories. There's been a lot of confusion, I think, because people read, um, stuff and talk about it. And some of the funding that went to townships versus school districts confuses people because they hear that a town is getting money, you know, which is different than a school district getting money. So I thought that was very helpful to see it all laid out like that. Um, and I'm interested to hear about the SRR3, you know, money and what that will, you know, will give us. Um, I did have a, a little question. I know with the Title I, we had been told like we weren't getting it, but we, is that, is there any answers about that, why they changed that from last year?
There is no clarification yet from the state. Usually their process is to take a look at what the data is that the US Department of Education has collected. It predicated on census data, uh, but then when they get information usually in May, they, the state, they often do, uh, a re-verification, uh, and sometimes come up with missed students. So predicated on census data, the federal government's telling the state that it doesn't look like Berners-Township School District is eligible for Title I. This has happened to us once before, uh, I think it was three years ago. Uh, and they told us in, in, in March or April. And then it's May that they start doing their own count and it, I think it was June or July before they told us, oh, we made a mistake last time. Uh, you know, I initially reached out to them at the state level and asked all the questions about it. Do you think this will change? And, you know, what I got was, we don't know. I mean, Nick saw the emails that I had. So I think we just have to wait the process out and for now, we have to assume that it's not going to be renewed. But, uh, we do have the ability to carry over, uh, for one-year funds from the prior year because they've never been expended at the full level of the first couple of years. And so we do have carryover that would be sufficient to carry us through next year, which would give us time to plan for an, uh, uh, alternative way to provide for those programs that are funded from Title I if we need to do so at this time next year.
Yeah, the, the, the grant, uh, monitoring has been something that I have to thank Rod for because I, I probably send him three or four emails a week saying, could you please help me with this? There's another email that I, I'm struggling to keep track of. So all of these, uh, grants and everything that's been going on with the, with the SRR funds and the different tranches, they generate a lot of questions and it, it takes time to get all the answers. So I, I echo that sentiment. I appreciate Rod keeping track of all that for us.
Okay. Um, if there's no other board questions, now we will open up public comment on the budget. So this is just public comments about the budget and the presentation. If there's public comments on other agenda items, we'll have another session for that in a little bit. So this is just public comments on the budget. So do we have anyone, um, in the Zoom waiting room?
No, we do not.
Okay. Um, what about, um, comments that were sent in that are about the budget?
I, just looking here, I have one. No, I do not. I didn't, I don't have any public comment on anything specific to the budget.
Okay. So at this point, we'll close the public hearing on the budget. Um, and we are up to superintendent's report. I think there's one item on there. Would someone like to make a motion for the item? Um, Ms. Corn and Mr. Salmon seconded. Um, did you want to do your superintendent's report or should we vote on that item first?
You could vote on the, you can vote on the bus evacuation drills.
So we had bus evacuation drills and we need to vote on them. So, um, do we have a roll call, please, Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Ms. Hira?
Yes.
Mrs. McCune?
Yes.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you. So, Mr. McCarrion?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much. So, uh, I just wanted to share, as I mentioned, just very briefly during the budget presentation that, um, you know, we have every intention as we are budgeting and planning for September that we will be fully open, uh, and operating, uh, normally with full school days for our students. Uh, I wanted to, to share with you that, uh, we began doing that actually today. Uh, obviously we still have some things that are, you know, outside the sphere of what I would consider the normal that I'd like to have for our students, especially when we get into things like the lunch room uh, and the lunch process that we want to be more social and more jovial for the students. But, um, certainly today was a step in the right direction. I did ask for the principals just to give me a, a quick anecdotal feedback. Uh, and I have to say that all of them, uh, were very positive with how things went, uh, in all of the schools today. Uh, as I mentioned, the lunch issue is one that all of them talked about, uh, managing and tweaking and trying to make a little bit better uh, as time passes. And, um, certainly they, a lot of the schools were working on trying to make sure things, uh, worked well for an indoor process. And, uh, they certainly want to get the students outside as soon as, uh, they feel ready to be able to have them inside as well because, uh, as we discovered today, uh, the weather's okay and then it starts raining and you have to get inside anyway. So you need to make sure your inside plan is, is understood by the students as well as the outside plan. So, uh, the principals are all working on that, uh, but all in all, I think overall things went well today. Uh, I know that, um, they're, they're looking forward to tweaking things a little bit, uh, to make it as good as it can be. Uh, and of course, we're, we're monitoring health conditions. We're monitoring how things are going. Uh, and we look forward to, um, having a good couple of weeks and then maybe, maybe we can start to do, um, things a little bit more freely even uh, as we watch how, uh, we progress and how, how, uh, the health of the community is. But we were super excited today, uh, to have the kids for a full day and, and overall, um, word is it went well. So that was really great news. Um, the other good news that we got today, I think, um, some of you may have noticed the, uh, the governor's briefing today at 1 o'clock where he was sharing some details, uh, of a new executive order. I think it's number 238, uh, which described some new and much more significant, uh, capacity limits. So I sent that to, uh, all of our principals today. We'll, we'll talk about that this week. I know they're making their year-end plans and that, that executive order, uh, I think really will help them, uh, be able to have the types of gatherings that they want to have. Uh, obviously we'll, we'll see how things progress going forward in terms of how many people, um, we think we can accommodate for things like graduation. But certainly, uh, it was a step in the right direction and, um, I have every confidence that we'll be able to do at least what we did last year, uh, with the number of individuals at, at graduation ceremonies at Ridge uh, and/or at it. And we have to see if we can't open it up even more than that, uh, as we get into the details and as we go forward. Um, it seems like the governor is taking some rapid steps in the last couple of weeks and that's great. Uh, maybe in another couple of weeks, we get some more information that would, would be even more positive. So really looking forward to watching things, uh, improve and seeing numbers go down. And super encouraging day today, not only in the schools, but also, uh, in the governor's newsroom. So, um, really happy. It was a great day for us. Uh, we certainly hope that, uh, things keep going well.
Thank you, Mr. McCarrion. Yeah, I just want to thank everyone who did all the work to get things to logistically happen today. My kids are excited to be there all day. I was excited because I got a lot of work done because they were gone. And I have to send more food. That was the feedback I got. But that's not the school's fault. Um, did anyone have any questions for Mr. McCarrion? Okay, so we're up to approval of minutes. Oh, we're up to public comments, sorry, on agenda items. So this is public comment on any other agenda items. Um, do we have anyone waiting in the Zoom waiting room?
We do not.
Okay. Um, do you have any emails that are on agenda items?
On agenda items? No, I do not.
Um, maybe everyone is just so happy that today went well. They didn't feel like they needed to send us a comment. Um, okay, we're up to approval of minutes. Could we have a motion for item one, Mr. Salmon and Mrs. Richmond? Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Ms. Hira?
Yes.
Mrs. McCune?
Yes.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you. Okay, um, we're up to the Finance Committee. I think there's six items. There is an addendum, um, that you should have. Um, could someone make a motion for items one through six? Um, Ms. Schaefer and Mrs. Beckman? Um, do you have a committee report for finance?
No, we are meeting, um, later this month. But, uh, number one is just for the, the six items. Number one is a standing item. Number two is approval of the, the budget, um, that Mr. McLaughlin detailed. Uh, number three is approval of the, uh, tax levy. Number four is pass-through of, um, uh, funds to non-public schools in our district. Um, these are directed, I guess, to Mendham Country Day School. Uh, number five is, um, approval of an application for the Safety Grant Program through the New Jersey Schools Insurance Group, um, that we submitted for $28,822. And then number six is, uh, some professional development.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Salmon before we vote? Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Salmon before we vote? Okay, so could we have a roll call, please, Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Ms. Hira?
Yes.
Mrs. McCune?
Yes.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you. And we're up to the personnel committee. There are 12 items. Would someone like to make a motion for them? Mrs. White and Ms. Hira. Um, I have a committee report. A lot of it was just covered in the, um, in the budget presentation that we talked about. So Personnel Committee met on April 23rd. We discussed various um, non-aligned staff member contracts. And then we um, discussed the renewal of Effective School Solutions. Ms. O'Connell um, reported on how um, Effective School Solutions as, is servicing different students' needs at Ridge High School. She said that um, they're very happy with how um, ESS is working with our staff and students at the high school. And there is not going to be an increase to the cost of the contract. We're going to sign another contract with them for next year. And they have plans to track data of students who may be struggling now or maybe experiencing school refusal or um, or that might be anticipated come September. So they're going to try to put together um, a more robust school refusal identification program and intervention plan. And that would be um, funded through some of the CARES money. So I, I think Effective School Solutions will be um, part of that effort. We talked about the extended school year staffing and the um, intervention staffing that was just covered in the budget presentation for the summer. And how some of that will be funded by the different grants that Mr. McLaughlin talked about um, in his presentation. We also talked about the um, need for some campus monitors at Ridge for rotating drop schedule lunch coverage, so that the teachers can do all the stuff they're supposed to do during the common lunch. Their um, professional development, the activities that they'll be doing with students um, during the common lunch. Um, and that was also in the presentation. And we talked about the elementary specials, um, Quest Tech and Media. That was also referenced in the budget presentation and how um, staffing um, will be adjusted to make it more of a flexible program. That's going to be discussed at length in the curriculum meeting that's coming up. So I'm sure we'll get more details about how that program is going to work. And then at the personnel meeting, um, Mr. Syatt gave an update on the staffing forecast for the fall, which was also just covered in the budget presentation in terms of um, the numbers of the student enrollment and how we're headed in that, um, in that regard. Um, and we discussed a couple of the um, stipend positions that were covered, the big sibling program and the character education. And I think that was it. Does anyone have any questions about any of that? Okay, can we have a roll call on the personnel items, please, Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Ms. Hira?
Yes.
Mrs. McCune?
Yes.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you. Um, we're up to the policy committee. Is there a report?
No, there's no report. We, I did it last week and we're meeting again this next month or?
It's coming a week from today, I believe. Sorry, sorry, Jen.
It seems like you're always meeting. I can't keep track anymore.
We just love policy.
Okay, um, we're up to the curriculum committee. There's one item. Would somebody like to make a motion for that? Mr. Salmon and Mrs. White seconded it. It is um, a new course. Mrs. White, do you have a committee report?
No, we're meeting this Friday.
Okay, and I think you discussed this course last time.
I did. It's the anatomy and physiology that I discussed last meeting.
Okay. Okay, could we have a roll call, Mr. McLaughlin?
Sorry, I was muted. Mr. Salmon?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Beckman?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Richmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Corn?
Yes.
Ms. Hira?
Yes.
Mrs. McCune?
Yes.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you. Um, we're up to the wellness committee.
Wellness met last Thursday, April 29th. And we went over some standing items, including reviewing support for struggling learners. Um, we talked specifically about Ridge High School um, and that the um, rounds are going to be continuing with the assistant principals, the counselors, the teachers. They're going to be looking at the D and E list um, for marking period three and trying to continue to identify and support students in need of additional resources. There was discussion last time and this time they informed us that they are going to be doing another needs assessment, a counseling needs assessment sent out to all three grade bands. So it'll go to parents of kindergarten through five. And then six through eight and nine through 12 will each receive their own um, a needs assessment. And the follow-up will continue with students and families. They'll report back on the progress, on the responses. Their feeling is that if it just identifies one student, help that, help that one student. So we're, we're happy to have that going back out. There was a meeting after our last board meeting. We heard from some students and those students actually met with some board members the next day. And they reported out to wellness on that meeting. Um, we, they talked a little bit about the full day versus the reduced schedule. And a lot of um, the information turned, it became a little bit about individual situations. So we really encourage students to reach out to the teachers, their counselors. And you know, there are lots of resources out there to help you and uh, help you with this adjustment. And we also discussed um, with the screen time with the virtual students, that maybe teachers could be reminded that students might have to take a break, a break or need a bathroom break or whatever. So that reminder was something that the counseling staff is going to take back. The third thing we talked about was actually the S R grant. So now that we've learned what the S R grants are, there's one that's specifically for geared toward mental health. That was the forty-five thousand dollar um, grant. And it's been earmarked for us, but the um, counseling staff and program has to submit a proposal. And this is a three, grant for three years worth of programming. So the pro, the um, plan that they proposed includes an allocation for professional development and including trauma-informed practices for staff and supporting vulnerable youth. Again, this is the S R grants are supposed to be around the pandemic and, and analyzing certain pandemic-related and social situation, um, so the social situation that's happened in the world. There's also going to be PD for classroom teachers as well as student support staff. That is the counseling staff, the psychologist, the child study team. They're going to be, and there's a request for allocations for supporting groups um, for um, student groups such as students for school refusal, mental health, students with learning differences. A two thousand dollar, well, request for writing um, curriculum for the summer for staff costs for school refusal curriculum specifically. Some amount allocated for parent programming, um, for having professional speakers coming in to support parents, to support their children. And then um, a majority of it to a suggestion for bringing in a diversity and equity consultation service. And again, this is sort of a consultant to come in to support the district with some of our diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives over the next three years. So that's, that's what that part of that proposal is. So that's what the S R proposal is going in for. We moved on to the Ridge master schedule update. We're finally moving forward with the, the um, rotating drop schedule. So instead of hearing about the practice planning, we actually heard that they're in the middle of doing this. The course selection um, has concluded on the seventh. That sectioning meetings have also been completed. They're starting to build the Ridge drop, the rotating drop schedule. We're so excited. And then that'll continue through June. Um, or there has to be a whole new process and proposal for, and forms for change of course requests, which were formerly the late qualification forms and honors and AP appeals. Um, and they're working on that. And they're still at the beginning of stages, but they're, we're going to get updates the next meeting in May. There's also going to be, I think we talked about this last week, but there's going to be a virtual mental health fair. Um, and this is going to exist on the counseling website. It's going to be launching the second week of May. It came from a committee of students and faculty and staff. Volunteers were invited from the whole staff and faculty to submit testimonials or videos on how to handle the pandemic, how to handle stress. It's really cool stuff that's going to be there. We're very excited about it. It's going to be on the counseling website. And uh, you know, just a shout out to Ms. Rebecca Tritt, who is the coordinator from, um, she's one of the Ridge High School Saks. So look for that because it's going to be really great. And finally, we got our routine K through 12 counseling program update. The middle school is working on numb classroom just lesson, lesson discussions. We talked about this. It's a Zoom fatigue video that a middle school student actually made. And there's been a lot of generated discussion from the middle school students about it. Um, the elementary schools are finishing their last castle competency responsible decision-making as their current lesson topic. And at Ridge High School, they're really gearing up in the counseling area for AP testing, which this week we know is like a real, or this year is really long period of time. So that is the wellness committee.
Questions? Jen?
I know you knew I was going to have a question, but I'm on the committee. So we did have a discussion during the meeting. So my just, I had a couple of things to say. One, I'm so excited for the rotating drop schedule and they work super duper hard and really, and it's just amazing. And I think it's going to be great. So I think it's going to be a great way to start the new year off, um, especially getting the kids back. The accounting department puts together like these, like sick, beautiful, like websites and um, for the mental health. And they, they really have worked hard to try to keep up, which it's hard to keep up. It's like on a, we are on a treadmill. It's never stopping. I'm sure with all these problems that this uh, lockdowns have created for our kids. So I think um, they're doing the best they can and doing a great job. That, the, the, about the S R grant, which I mentioned in the meeting, I, and I think I have a pro, and I have a really problem. I'd like to have more information regarding the three thousand dollars that they want to allocate, which they still have to get. They haven't gotten any yet for the, for, for our diversity and equity consultation service. Just when we have so many things, like they're going to spend some money on the school refusal. And, and we're going to have so many other mental health issues that um, I just need some more information regarding how this is. And I know in, in notes you said, like how students want to be better prepared for college. How, how is a consultant for diversity and equity going to better prepare our kids for college? And how we, how, like what is this the end game for it? You know, I mean, how is this going to help us with the kids' mental health? That's just, you have to do it now, obviously, because this is just, I'm just answering the question. But I think more discussion has to go around it since it's a huge bulk of the money that we're asking for. It's thirty thousand out of forty-five thousand. The other, you know, for professional development I get, and the other things, I'm just a little, this, it just, it seems like a lot. And I'd like to know how it's going to be implemented. That's all.
And I think there's a lot more discussion coming. I think in some ways it was a placeholder for money, right? So they don't even know how much this would cost. So they're kind of giving it an estimate. Um, and we still don't know if it's been approved. But I think the idea is that because it's a three-year grant too, to, to look at it over three is a little bit different from looking at it over, you know, one. But you know, again, I, I think we will, you know, sort of have more. They're going to look into consultants if they get the grant. And that, that point, we'd have to have further discussions about contracting with an, an outside agency. So we'll have, you know, we'll have some more discussion about this.
Right, yeah, it's just about the consultants and what their, yeah, their focus is going to be on.
Mr. Salmon?
Uh, so it's really interesting that um, they're going to sponsor the, put on them virtual mental health fair because we get um, as part of the board, we get like the New Jersey School Board's little circular. And one of the things in the back of it was um, some, some high school had all the kids or whoever wanted to do it, write like a little um, you know, uh, testimonial about how they handled the pandemic. And they called it like memoir of lockdown or something like that. And I was like, oh, that's such like a, you know, kind of cool way to get, you know, like have other people see individual experiences like within the community. And uh, it sounds like we're doing kind of the, the same thing, but with, with videos and stuff like that. So I'm, I'm really interested to see how that comes out. Because I thought it was such a, such a cool idea to try and like, you know, generate some closure if, if, you know, on, on this, especially for the, the high school age kids. So I'm really interested to see that.
Cool idea. It'll be, it's going to be great, but it'll be interesting to see. It's almost like a little time capsule too, right? So hopefully, you know, 10 years from now, we can look back and be like, wow, we, we, we managed that. So, yeah.
That reminds me, my daughter's, um, my daughter's college music group had a virtual concert the other night. And one of the girls wrote a song about, it was like a tribute to her quarantine space. So she had video of all these different things in her room. And it was really well done. She did an amazing job. It was, I can't describe it, but it was, it just was like kind of mind-blowing because just doing this video from inside of her room, she was able to show like her experience during, you know, going to college in a pandemic. Sorry, Nick, I, I interrupted you. What were you going to say?
Oh, I, I think I made a joke about burying that time capsule.
With a couple of uh, vaccines too with it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so now we're up to liaison committee reports. Does anyone have anything? Ms. Corn?
I, I have a few things I got from the um, municipal alliance. I just wanted to, because if I wait till our meeting, it'll be too late to read, read it out. So um, so there's still time to register first. So um, for think, don't drink.
Right.
Um, that's from Empower Somerset. And it's um, you know, because of graduation and prom celebrations are right around the corner. Uh, underage drinking is a big deal and has consequences for both youth and their parents or caregivers. Join us for a virtual discussion on what is at stake when youth drink alcohol. It's featuring the Somerset County Prosecutor, Michael Robertson, Jeffrey Bell Esquire and Karen Wall. He'll be sharing a personal story. So it's May 4th. I think I read this out before, May 4th, which is tomorrow from six to seven thirty. And this is a flyer. So it says click here to register. So I'm thinking you can probably go to the Empower Somerset website and um, look for think, don't drink or Google it. And um, I don't know if this is, this was posted maybe on the um,
It's on the, it's on our webpage under parent presentations.
Okay, good.
So you can get to the link that way.
Um, and then hold on, I had a couple more because we don't have our meeting till tomorrow night. They've been so busy, you know, the health department. It's just, it's hard to like, you know, get meetings together. Again, I'm going to talk about that Grab and Go Teen Outreach Program because I just think it's such a great thing that they're doing at the library um, with the municipal alliance. And uh, for teens, grade seven through 12. And um, the pickup dates are uh, May 19th and 20th, June 9th and 10th, July 7th and 8th, August 11th and 12th, September 22nd, 23rd, October 13th and 14th, November 10th and 11th, December 8th and 9th. And the kids are going to be available at the lower level of the Burns Township Library. It's one kit per student. It's first come, first served. Um, and then pickup times may vary. There's an interactive Zoom call will typically take place the Friday followed, following you, you're picking up the kit. Um, and you can sign up for email notifications. Um, and you can sign up for remind text alerts. You can text at grab and go to eight, one, zero, one, zero. And then for all the questions, please reach out to Rachel Talbott, she's a teen librarian at rtalbert@burnslibrary.org. And it just seems like a great thing if kids are trying to reconnect and, and something to do. There's a um, New Jersey Hope and Healing. They have COVID-19 crisis counseling services. It's like have you, you or someone you know impacted by COVID-19. So they have confidential anonymous free services, our stress management, emotional support, linkage to resources, daily Zoom calls, motivational quotes and drop in Zoom sessions. And you can reach them at seven, three, two, two, zero, four, six, five, one, zero, or email hopeandhealing@ccdom.org. And it's New Jersey Hope and Healing Counseling Program offered through Catholic charities. And um, it's for New Jersey communities in New Jersey affected by COVID-19. And I know Jen had mentioned this last time, the Lindsay Meyer Teen Institute, which is a really great uh, organization. And they're going back, I think, if they have these leadership, uh, leadership conferences. And that they're having offerings in twenty, twenty- and that they're having offerings in 2021, 22, which is great. They can, they, they provide, you know, quality leadership, mental health and up, leadership, mental health and alcohol, tobacco and other drug prevention training and educational opportunities for teens. And they adapted all our programming and planning several new events to help both youth and adults cope with the difficulties brought forth by our current circumstances. And the primary focus is public health, as a public health agency is making sure everyone is safe. So they're taking time to put appropriate health, appropriate health measures and precautions in place. And they're going to offer the following programs. The upcoming year is health and safety conditions permit. So they have a summer leadership conference featuring a four-day hybrid program, multi-day overnight weekend leadership conference at Camp Mason and a multi-day overnight advanced leadership training at Camp Mason. So I'm not going to read through all this, but you can, you could go onto their website, I think. So it's the, to find out information, if your team wants to get involved, it's the Lindsay Meyer Teen Institute. And you can email info@njlmti.org. And you can go online and look at them at njlmti.org. And they have a lot of great programs for teens. And there's a flyer there and they might be posting the flyer. Maybe I'm not sure. And I think that's, that's it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about any of that? It's a lot of good stuff.
I know it's a lot, but I haven't read it all. So it's kind of like, just joined it. That's good.
Okay. No other liaison committee reports, right? So now we're up to public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone in the waiting room?
We do. We have one person in the waiting room. It's a phone number. So when I admit them, I'll just ask them to identify themselves and give their address.
Okay.
I'll admit them now. Can you hear us? I don't have a name to, hello? Hello, yes. Hi there. You're, you're live on the board meeting. Could you identify yourself, please, with an address and name?
Todd Edelstein. 172 Riverside Drive, Baskin Ridge.
Thank you. You can go ahead.
I can hear you through the phone, I mean, through the computer.
Sure. Yep. You can go ahead and give your public comment.
Okay.
Can you turn down that YouTube feed, please? Because we can hear the feedback.
Todd Edelstein, Riverside Drive. When are you going to go, when are you going back to live meetings at the school board education meetings?
Is that the end of your public comment, sir?
Well, let's see if there's going to be an answer.
We usually wait and respond after.
We'll answer that once.
Okay, you're not going to answer. Okay, fine. Also, why is the chat feature on disabled for the meetings? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, that's all in the waiting room. Let me see if we have. Mr. Syatt, I just wanted to just let Mr. Edelstein know we're going to address that question about the public meetings and when they'll be live at, at the end of our meeting when we get to Board Forum. So, Mr. Edelstein, if you're still listening, we're going to answer that at the end of our meeting. As far as the, the chat comment goes, I'll address that as well when we close public comment. Just don't want to lose our listener there. Okay. And then I'll go into written public comment. We have a written public comment from Melissa Panzarella of Baskin Ridge. I don't have an address. ESY is coming up in July for special ed students. Other school districts in our area are distributing surveys asking parents if their children will be virtual or in-person for ESY this summer. Why isn't our district asking parents? Why are they telling us we have no choice? We understand the state has not yet issued guidance, but why are other districts planning ahead to offer a choice if it's permitted and our district is not? Thank you. And that is all I have for written public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Syatt. Do we have any response to that before we go on to address the board meeting issues at Board Forum?
So I, I don't want to speak for Ms. O'Connell who's not able to be with us tonight. I do know that we are planning on having ESY be an in-person program just as we are opening up our schools to all in-person effective today. And until we really get a handle on what constitutes a rationale for students being remote, we're not really entertaining that because we want our school systems to be in-person institutions. I can also comment on the, the chat feature of the Zoom calls. We've got a lot to manage just in managing the comments that are coming in via email and also to manage the comments that are done by the approach that we're requesting, which is that the person orates by entering the meeting and making their public comment that way. And that's about all we can manage. We can't police the chat room as well. So we're, we're managing what we can in terms of the Zoom meetings with phone calls coming in as well as persons, persons coming in live and speaking. And finally, with the email comments. So we have three different ways for folks to make public comments and we certainly hope that people can take advantage of, of those and that that suffices to allow them to make their public comments. And then as Ms. McKean noted, we were going to speak about in-person board meetings when we get to Board Forum. So thank you for your, for your comments and questions.
Also, people have said really, really inappropriate things on chat rooms before when we've, like when they let the chat go, you can't really control what people say.
Yes.
Was that too?
There's that sometimes.
Okay. So we are now up to Board Forum. So I guess the first item to discuss is in-person Board of Education meetings. Last at our, I guess each month we've been readdressing this issue about when it's, when we feel that we are going to move back to in-person meetings. And last time we discussed doing it at our next meeting, which is May 24th. So that is the current plan. I think maybe Mr. McCarrion can speak a little bit as to how that will happen logistically, what it'll be like.
So we've been, we've been working on it, working a little bit with our, our IT folks as well as Mr. Faculman, who helps us manage the pack with Mr. Harvey, who helps out with the recording and the sound. So what we would like to be able to do is not ask board members or the public to have to manage with Zoom, but rather to livestream the meeting, which would be a livestream of the scene in front of the pack. And certainly folks that want to come in person would be able to make their public comments in the, in the normal in-person way. And then for folks that would prefer not to come to the meeting, but rather to watch the livestream, we would take public comment in the same way we have with the btconnect@burnsboe.com email address. So that is the plan.
Do any board members have any comments or questions about the plan? You're good with it? It'll be very
We'll mask on stage, right?
Yeah, we'll have our masks because we're indoors and we're going to be having our masks. And we'll have to test out the sound, obviously, with the live streaming, you know, with the microphones to make sure.
Yeah.
We're working on, we're working on trying to figure out the best seating arrangement as well. We have to see how well we can seat the board and how far apart we can seat people. And obviously that'll, you know, make people have a little bit more comfort, I think, in terms of the masking situation. So we want to kind of look at that layout and then, and then consider the mask issue. But certainly what we're going to make the best arrangement we possibly can.
And do we have a plan for cleaning the pack after we're there in the evening before the students arrive again at 7:15 in the morning?
Yeah, well, obviously we have students in there every day. I was there today because we have students in there eating. I wanted to see how that went. And they have the chairs taped and labeled. So my feeling is we would ask anybody that comes in person to sit the same way. As far as the cleaning is concerned, obviously we're going to have to clean, whether that's going to be at night or early in the morning. We'll have to figure that out as a function of how late does the meeting go. You know, typically our custodians have the building locked up and they're gone by 11 at the latest. Often it's earlier than that. And then in the morning, obviously, we could have staff come in really early if we have to. But I, you know, we, we may have to make that kind of an audible as we deal with each, each night's meeting, you know, if, if the custodians are packing up for the night and we're still there, that's going to call for them to have to come in and clean early in the morning.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything for Board Forum? No? Ms. Schaefer?
I just want to, it was mentioned at the beginning, CATS is going to be starting. It opens on Thursday. There are shows through Sunday. It's at Pleasant Valley Park outside under the stars. It'll be fun. And I believe Wednesday's opening night has been historically seniors from some of the assisted living, which can't, they can't come this year. So if there are any seniors in the community who want to come, I believe that they're well open to and welcoming, welcoming anybody who wants to come of the senior group in this, in the town. You can probably email Ridge Drama Boosters and they'll get you hooked up with tickets.
And Suzanne, tickets for sale now, right? Through, you can buy tickets through?
Yeah, they were sold out for Friday and Saturday, but I don't know if they opened up more spots because of the increased capacity. So who knows?
Cool.
Yeah.
And I'll just add that I happened to be in Pleasant Valley Park this weekend when they were practicing and they were all dressed in costume. They sound amazing and they look amazing. So I highly recommend, you know, going out if you can.
And I guess in terms of events and capacity, we'll be, you know, looking forward to hearing more about, you know, end of the year things now that the governor has issued a little more guidance about what we're allowed to do. And I'm sure the individual schools will be communicating.
Yeah, we're, we're going over it. Yeah, we're going over it tomorrow. We have a, we have an administrative meeting tomorrow. We're going to go over the EO that came out this afternoon and ask that, you know, admins in their weekly messages can give some updates as a function of it.
Yeah. And I guess just ask everyone to be patient because of course everyone wants to know what's happening. But a lot of these events are kind of complicated and at some of the venues and stuff like that, there's a lot to work out, you know, for the venues also. So I'm sure answers will come out as soon as people have them.
I think it's good news. I mean, I was looking at it all today and I think it's going to be good news for our events, which is great. We're going forward, not backwards, which is really nice and it's great for the seniors. And I really think that they deserve, they deserve to have a great prom and a great graduation. And I think, I think we're walking, going in that direction with everything, like everything. So that's good and that's a really good news and it's great to end on a positive note, knowing that they'll get something that they, they really truly deserve this year.
Okay. If no one has anything else, I guess we're up to adjournment. Would someone like to make a motion for adjournment? Ms. Corn and Mrs. Beckman? All in favor?
I vote to adjourn, but only if Nick sings Memories as we adjourn the meeting. Come on, Nick, a few bars. End on a positive note.
No, sorry. I can't do it. I can't do it.
We could have put a cat filter on your face on the Zoom. I don't know how to do that. So.
Sorry. I need this computer to work tomorrow, Tim. I'm afraid if I do that, it might not.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for attending the meeting and
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.